Fall to order the July 27th meeting of the Cary Town Council. Councilmember Robinson is joining us virtually this evening as she's struggling with, well, she's not struggling, but she has COVID. I hear she's doing very well. Jennifer, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
How are you feeling?
I feel okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Get well soon.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move ahead. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask that you join me at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at the portion of the meeting where we adopt the agenda. There was a staff request to add the adjustment in our meeting schedule to our consent agenda. This item will set the date for our work sessions in the fall. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Told.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations, and I'll recognize Councilmember Bush to read the anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Act proclamation. Ms. Bush?
Thank you, Mayor. This month is the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It was signed into law July 26, 1990, and it prohibits the discrimination against people with disabilities, and today we recognize that. Whereas, the ADA is a landmark piece of legislation that significantly advanced the rights of people with disabilities and aimed to eliminate barriers and ensure those with disabilities have the same opportunities and rights as everyone else. Whereas Cary is committed to being inclusive and upholding the principles of the ADA to allow for those with disabilities to achieve their full potential. And whereas Cary remains devoted to our efforts to work towards full ADA compliance through Cary's ADA Transition Plan that's allowing for those with disabilities the ability to utilize our facilities, parks, and greenways. And whereas Cary prioritizes the accessibility of our Go Cary public transit system, every vehicle has ADA accessible ramps, and Cary has the highest percentage of accessible bus stops in North Carolina. And whereas Cary makes it a priority to provide enjoyable and fulfilling recreation opportunities to all individuals of all ability levels, whether it's through a variety of programs specifically designed for persons with disabilities and specialized recreation, or through the inclusion of services that provide support for individuals with and without disabilities to participate together. And now therefore I, Lori Bush, on behalf of the Cary mayor and all of council, hereby recognize the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and encourage all of our Cary citizens to recognize the progress that's been made and also continue to work towards ADA's promise of true inclusion.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the town manager's update, and I'll call on Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor, council. First, I want to provide an update on Cary Police Canine Officer Dakota. Dakota was seriously injured in the line of duty last Friday when a motor vehicle robbery suspect attempted to run over police officers who were trying to arrest him. Fortunately, all of our human officers are physically okay, but Canine Dakota suffered significant injuries, including a broken jaw and a spinal fracture. Even so, we think she's going to be okay over time, but she may not be able to recover enough to return to active duty. Chief Salt says he's a little concerned we might not get her back from the vet hospital because they've fallen in love with her. So that's some good news that people have been really concerned about. As for the suspect, not such good news for him. He was taken into custody on Monday and faces a lot of charges. While there have also been several news stories about my next item, I did want to report that we did receive 18 responses to our request for qualifications for the potential redevelopment of town-owned properties downtown. The submittals came from teams from across the United States as well as from North Carolina, including here locally. Issuing the RFQ was the first step in a yet uncharted course to determine how and when the town properties might evolve as we continue to implement the Imagine Cary Community Plan and think about our future. As for the next steps, timelines and processes moving forward, we'll be working on answers to those questions over the coming months. The first step is to fully review and digest what's been submitted, and this is too important to rush. Of course, any timetable we develop will be on one that includes a tremendous amount of citizen involvement and takes in account everything we've already been working on, along with unanticipated issues and opportunities that may come our way. And my final update is about one of the mayor's favorite events, our Atlantic Tire Championship at the Cary Tennis Park. This year Cary is featuring a summer series consisting of two-week-long tournaments. The first week is coming up on August 6 through 13. Several former top 50 players have committed to coming to Cary for the event, which is being held just prior to the U.S. Open. For those who can't make it to the first series in August, more tennis is coming September 10 through the 17. And as always, details about these events are available on Cary's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Our next item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the online and printed agendas. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or attending here in person tonight. And if you are here in person and would like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing, and that's to your advantage because public hearing speakers get more time. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There is a timer on the podium, and it will help you adhere to the three-minute time limit. It will start out with a green light. When there's 30 seconds remaining, it will turn into a yellow light. And when your time is expired, it will be a flashing red light, and that's the point I'll interrupt you again, not trying to be rude or mean, just trying to respect all the speakers and their time. I thank you, everyone in the audience, for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I'll first call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
We've had two written comments and one registered speaker. The first written comment was from Adam McFarland, raised concerns about the amount of stuff stored outside by those who may be homeless and the dilapidated buildings at 122 Southwest Maynard Road, and asked if there was anything the town could do. Dana Cray shared concerns about the vast amount of building and traffic issues in the downtown area. She requested council to delay building on the town hall property until it calmed down in the area.
Okay.
Our first registered speaker is Brett Pinson.
Good afternoon. Over the last six months or so, I've made it a habit to watch these town council meetings, either in person or through the live online feed. And in that time, I've witnessed countless amounts of frustrated or upset and occasionally hateful testimonies during these public speak-out sessions. And what I haven't really seen is anybody praise you for the things that you are doing. So like many people in Cary, I'm a transplant from another place, another state. My family and I moved here from Los Angeles two and a half years ago, and we wanted a place that was welcoming and inclusive and felt like a real community, and we have absolutely found that here in Cary. We've also found that the, we've also found a local government that is faster and more efficient than the other 10-plus cities that I've lived in in my lifetime. For example, we had a storm drain cover collapse during, a storm drop cover collapse in our cul-de-sac, and that is a place where both my children and all the neighborhood children play. And so we called it on a Sunday, or it happened on a Sunday, we called it on Monday. By Tuesday, it was fixed. And that is lightning speed when it comes to government repairs, especially if you're coming from California. So, and then in my job as the manager of the Cary Downtown Farmers Market, we've worked with town police officers, firefighters, the Events Department, the Parks Department, the Arts Center, and local town council members. And I must say, it's been shockingly pleasant. Now, that doesn't mean that we get everything that we ever asked for or we wanted, but that's really not what governance is. So no one gets everything they want, but everybody gets something they want. That's my view of government. Now, I do believe that having a healthy and constructive government means people voicing their opinions, and sometimes these opinions will not always align with the visions of government officials, and that's all right. There may be a time when I am up here doing that very same thing. But I do feel that if you're going to speak out when things are bad, you should also speak out when you see things that are good. So I just want to take a moment to thank the council, as well as all of the other countless town employees that work their butts off to make sure that this count keeps on going. Being a public servant is no easy job, and not for the faint of heart, but I am thankful that you do it.
Thank you so much.
No additional registered speakers.
If you are here this evening and would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would invite you forward at this time. Anyone to speak?
I'm going to try to do this correctly this time. My name is Mary Collins, and I also would like to acknowledge all the people in Cary who work so hard to make it a really wonderful town. And that's one of the reasons why I persist in making certain comments, because I do love and care about this town. I've now been here almost 24 years, and my stepdaughter and son grew up here. And this is a really changing place, where I think so many people are feeling that change is happening so rapidly and in ways that they don't even have a way to keep up with or know what might be coming next that would seem, you know, really kind of shocking. So to take the example of the town hall development, most of us learned about that through the media and WRL, Axios, other places. And we understand that perhaps that wasn't intended to be the way that the citizens would learn about it. But now we've learned, the 18 responses have come in, and there are different kinds of explanations given about how long it might take, what the process would be, that the citizens will have input. And I guess having seen a lot of things come down the road over 23 years, don't feel a great sense of assurance and reassurance about what the final process is going to be and that it's not really already a decided deal that's going to happen. So I just would like you to have compassion for people who have lived here, who found it affordable, who maybe now don't find it affordable, who are essentially getting, you know, also pushed out in a way from a town that they have helped to create. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Yes, please.
My name is Richard Sterns.
Can you move to your left, please? Move to your left, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Sterns. I live in 114 Candy Tough Court, which is the border of where the Middletown townhouses are going to meet up with.
We're going to have a public hearing on that, and I'll invite you back up then.
Okay.
Okay, you'll get more time. Okay, sure. Anyone else to speak on anything that's not a public hearing? Before we close, Public Speaks Out, I do have to speak on the RFQ thing again. It's very important to understand that we don't know, we being the council, don't know anything at this point, except for what we see in the media, and that's purposefully done. While staff prepares this, it will be presented to the public and the council at the same time. The public is going to be a main driver of what happens on town hall campus, not the council, not developers, but the public. That's where we're going to take our input, and that's when we'll decide what happens on town hall. I haven't seen anything. I don't know anything. I got requests from WRL, and I told them, "You're about three, four months too early because I don't know." I don't know anything at all. And so, and I said, "The public will be the first to respond and give us their ideas as well." So that's where we are in RFQ. Please, don't get your information from the media. They're very incomplete and not very detailed in what they present, which misleads and confuses a lot of people. And if you have questions, please ask us. And if you've been here for 20-something years, I've been here almost 50 years, ask the council, ask the staff. We have the best staff in the world, ranked number one last year. Ask them your questions. They'll answer them, and we'll be glad to answer them as well. So if we are confusing you, we're sorry. We're trying to do a better job of messaging. Of course, we're fighting the media, and that makes it even tougher. So I'll get off my soapbox now, and we'll move on. Next thing is the consent agenda, and that's item four, for the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV. I'll take a moment to review the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. We have 21-801 Apollo of town-owned property located at 1101 Walnut Street. Carpenter Fire State Road Widening and Improvement Project resolutions authorizing condemnation. Amendments to delegation of authority. Disposal of surplus personal property, $30,000 or more. Fiscal year 2024 Thomas Brook Park and baseball repaving. Calling for public hearings for 23-809 Maynard Properties on Lewis Stevens Drive, 23-810 3150 Green Level West Road, 23-807 6200 and 6308 Holly Springs Road, and 22-809 Levano Cary Exation. Adjustment to adopted meeting schedule. Councilmembers, anyone like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is item 22-RZ14 Middleton Avenue Townhouses. Principal Planner Heather Wheelahan will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight. It's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll see it in a few months. Ms. Wheelahan?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the public hearing for 22-RZ21, a request to rezone a five-property assemblage totaling about two and a half acres along Middleton Avenue in downtown Cary, just south of Chapel Hill Road. The applicant proposes to rezone from town center high-density residential mid-rise to town center high-density residential garden conditional use. The site is located in downtown Cary between Chapel Hill Road and the railroad. The Taylor's Pond Townhouse development is adjacent to the west, and the Pine Ridge apartment complex is on the opposite end of Middleton Avenue to the east. Three of the properties are undeveloped. One has a vacant duplex on site, and another is occupied by a detached dwelling and several outbuildings, including a cabin and barns. Downtown is divided into several sub-districts or sub-areas. The subject properties are within the North Academy sub-area. The sub-area encompasses a variety of residential and commercial uses. It also includes numerous key civic and community sites such as Town Hall, the future Multimodal Center, and the Chamber of Commerce. There are overhead utility lines along approximately 75 feet of the total 450 feet of the subject site's frontage on Middleton Avenue. Per the LDO, utility lines are required to be installed underground, except in situations where placement is prohibited or determined to be impractical. Detailed plans will be reviewed in coordination with Duke Energy at the time of development plan. Cary's GIS maps do not indicate any streams on site. Middleton is currently a two-lane road with approximately 40 feet of right-of-way without sidewalk. The future cross-section is a 50-foot right-of-way with five-foot sidewalks on one side of the street. Bike facilities are not required on local streets. The development of the subject parcels would require the developer to build the road frontage along their property and make the Middleton Avenue connection. The unbuilt section of Middleton is shown here with the dashed green line. Middleton Avenue on the Taylor's Pond sign is stubbed to the property line in preparation for this planned connection. The recorded plat shows the right-of-way up to the property line, and the 1981 development plan shows pavement constructed to the property line. Field determination of these features will be completed at time of development plan review. Go Cary Route 7 and Go Triangle Route 310 serve Chapel Hill Road north of the subject property, with the nearest stops approximately 800 feet away. The corridor is also being studied for potential Bus Rapid Transit or BRT extension from downtown Cary to Research Triangle Park. The park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan does not include any proposed greenways within the subject parcels. Robert Godbold Park is less than a mile northwest of the site, and in terms of greenway access, the nearest option is Northwoods Greenway, approximately two-tenths of a mile northwest of the site. There's also a proposed street-side trail along Chapel Hill Road just north of the site. The site is currently zoned Town Center High Density Residential Mid-Rise, or TC-HDR Mid-Rise. The applicant is proposing to rezone to Town Center High Density Residential Garden Conditional Use. The applicant has offered several conditions, including limiting uses to townhouses, limiting development to 12 dwellings per acre, a minimum of 1,200 square feet of community gathering area, providing two-car garages for each townhouse unit, providing 60 ampereceptacles for EV charging in each garage, and two historic preservation conditions, including the preservation of the log cabin on the 317 Middleton Avenue with a historic preservation easement, and the salvage of historic windows and doors on the primary dwelling also on 317 Middleton Avenue. These two town center sub-districts are similar, and both are appropriate for North Academy sub-area. There are some differences, however. In terms of use, many uses are the same between the two base sub-districts. The proposed rezoning is limited to townhouses. It is worth pointing out that single detached dwellings is not a permitted use in the existing zoning, so redevelopment would incorporate more intensity than currently exists along Middleton. Density and dimensional standards for the sub-districts can vary depending on the use. This proposal is for townhouses, so this initial chart compares those standards specifically. Town Center High Density Residential Mid-Rise permits up to eight townhouse dwellings per acre. TC-HDR Garden, the proposed base district, permits up to 25 dwelling units per acre, and the applicant has limited development on this site to 12 dwelling units per acre. There is no minimum lot size in the existing or the proposed zoning for townhouse development. With the proposed zoning, the maximum townhouse height would be 45 feet, which is no change from the current zoning. Under the current zoning, townhouse development would require a minimum side setback of 10 feet and either a 10 or 18-foot road setback, depending on where the driveway is located. There is no minimum or roadway setback, no minimum side or roadway setback in the base district or the proposed zoning. I also wanted to show a chart that shows the standards, what those dimensional standards would be if multifamily were to develop on the site, since it is a permitted use under the current zoning. HDR Mid-Rise permits multifamily up to 50 dwelling units per acre. HDR Garden Base District again up to 25 dwelling units per acre. And as noted, the proposed zoning does not include multifamily as a permitted use. The site would need to meet the minimum lot size of 100,000 square feet to develop as multifamily, and since this assemblage is split by Middleton Avenue, with about 8,400 square feet on the south side and 29,000 square feet, 29,000, excuse me, 84,000, 29,000. On the other side, the additional acreage would need to be acquired to meet that minimum lot size and develop as multifamily. HDR Mid-Rise would allow multifamily up to 75 feet in height, and in both HDR Garden and proposed zoning, the maximum height for multifamily is 45 feet. And finally, there would be no minimum side or roadway setback for multifamily development under the current zoning or the base HDR district, sub-district. The Future Growth Framework map designates the subject site within the downtown special planning area, and as I noted, the properties are within the North Academy sub-area of the downtown special planning area. The North Academy sub-area is described as an area envisioned to accommodate intense development and have a highly connected multimodal network and incorporate strong urban design principles. This assemblage, located in what the Cary Community Plan calls Supporting Neighborhoods, is within Supporting Neighborhoods designation within that North Academy sub-area. The plan notes that change in this area will occur over time as property owners redevelop. Redevelopment here offers opportunity to provide housing options near central downtown and incorporate walkable design. The Cary Community Plan shows medium-scale urban residential development, such as townhouses and multifamily, specifically within these supporting neighborhoods. The plan also notes that the North Academy sub-area contains many historic structures and resources, and the plan recommends that these be protected and that adjacent development or infill be sensitive to these historic structures to create a unified and context-sensitive pattern of development. Conformance with the Cary Community Plan is analyzed through the lens of the special planning area, as well as the general policies of the plan. In regards to the special planning area of downtown, this proposal could further opportunities to increase connectivity and sub-area cohesion. Improving the neighborhood street network and associated streetscapes creates more cohesive environment for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. The proposal could support policies that encourage private investment in the redevelopment of properties downtown, as well as providing a range of uses, including residential, throughout downtown. The Shape Chapter of the Cary Community Plan encourages focusing the most intense development in strategic locations, facilitating infill and redevelopment, revitalizing targeted corridors, maintaining high-quality development, and providing appropriate transitions. This rezoning could further these policies as it proposes high-density infill residential development on an underperforming site within several hundred feet of the Chapel Hill Road corridor. It supports these policies through its commitment to provide townhouse development with two-car garages in each unit, EV charging, and 1,200 square feet of community gathering area, which is double the LDO requirement of 600. Regarding transitions, the Cary Community Plan notes that transitions can be accomplished through a variety of ways, depending on the context-specific objective to either separate or connect uses. In this case, the townhouses provide a good use, form, and height transition between the existing townhouses and detached dwellings. Additionally, consistent with the overall objective in downtown to create cohesion and connectedness, the new road connection and sidewalk will facilitate transition between the Taylor's Pond neighborhood to the west and this site. Staff also found the request could support live, work, serve, and move chapter policies of the plan. It supports live by providing housing options and creating infill development. Work by helping grow a sustainable workforce. The proposal supports serve by providing opportunity for denser development, which combined with access to transit and proximity to downtown Cary. Compact urban development is one strategy that addresses air quality by increasing efficiency and supporting alternate transportation modes. The request also supports serve through the commitment to receptacles in each garage for the connection of EV charging equipment. The proposal supports move by furthering safe, multimodal connectivity, and a well-maintained system. As I noted, there is an assemblage of buildings on the 317 Middleton Avenue property, including a house, barn, shed, and log cabin dating from around 1930. Given the Given the age and the condition of these buildings, staff arranged a site visit with Capital Area Preservation to assess the buildings for historic significance. CAP visited the site where they identified that the main house, barns, and shed did not retain historic integrity. However, CAP recommended that the historic doors and six-over-sash windows from the main house be salvaged for reuse. CAP also noted that the log cabin on-site had retained much of its historic integrity and recommended the structure be preserved either onsite or relocated for reuse elsewhere. The applicant has offered two conditions related to historic preservation, as I noted: one, to preserve the log cabin on-site with a historic preservation easement; and two, to salvage the primary structure, historic windows and doors for reuse. The inclusion of these conditions further the historic preservation master goals two and three. Notification was mailed to property owners within 800 feet. Public hearing signs were also posted on the site. We held a neighborhood meeting in conjunction with the applicant in November. Six citizens were attendants. We fielded questions regarding traffic on Middleton and questions regarding the road connection. Since the neighborhood meeting, I've received four calls and two emails, mostly focused on opposition to the Middleton Avenue connection, questions about the road widening that would be necessary potentially, and sidewalks, questions about the Cary Community Plan vision in general for the area, and questions about potential traffic calming. This concludes my presentation. The applicant's Representative Glenda Top is here this evening to provide some additional remarks, and I'm happy to answer further questions after the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. As you said, you have an excellent staff, and Heather went through everything, so instead of boring you, I will point out that we do comply with the Cary Community Plan. She listed all the policies that we comply with. We did spend quite a bit of time working with staff and Capital Area Preservation in terms of making sure that the log cabin is maintained on the site and salvaging the windows and doors. She is correct. The main concern that we heard, both at the neighborhood meeting and comments that we have received, is with the connection of Middleton. We are required to make the improvements along our frontage, which does include connecting Middleton. But again, that was the biggest concern that we heard, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now is the time for the public hearing for the Middleton Avenue townhouses, and I'll call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
We had five written comments and three registered speakers. Julian Mullin submitted her written comments and also registered to speak to share those. John Carr of Jordan Price Law Offices submitted a letter as the General Counsel for the Taylor Pond Homeowners Association. The association objects to the extensions of Middleton Avenue but does not object to the proposed townhome development in question. Lee Price of Taylor Pond shared his objection to the plan to extend Middleton Avenue, suggested a traffic study needs to be done regarding Chapel Hill Road, and requested rainwater, sewer improvements in the area. Anonymous, we had anonymous comment that shared their concerns about creating a cut-through if the avenue was extended and shared how the atmosphere of the neighborhood would be disrupted with more traffic. Allison and Graham Wicks opposed the rezoning. Our first registered speaker is Joseph Goulata.
Good evening. I'm speaking in regards, obviously, to 22, ours, the 21. I'm opposed to the Middleton extension, and there's various reasons, and if you give me a few moments, I'll go through them. Mainly, that section of Middleton has been blocked since 1985, when the original Taylor Pond community went in. It was a variance, it was approved, and that area's been blocked. That created a dead end or cul-de-sac. And it obviously was a significant factor, I know for myself and for others who bought their homes in the area, because cul-de-sacs and dead ends have a certain attraction. There are certain benefits to them. In fact, to the point where those who live on cul-de-sacs and dead ends usually pay 20% more. It's fitted into the pricing because of the desirability. More importantly, they're safer streets for the residents and children. Due to the traffic on a cul-de-sac, the streets are safer for children, residents on the street. Cars also tend to drive much slower when they know the road ends a few feet up. Middleton Avenue is not a standard width road. It's tight. It's tight for two cars to pass each other. In addition, many homeowners and guests park on the street. This compounds the issue of navigating through. Because of its present difficulty, passing cars often have to stop and allow an oncoming car to proceed. They don't move together. It taxes one's manners. When two cars are going both directions, it forces one to stop. I know, because I travel that road. It will increase if Middleton is extended to a cut-through. It'll take a very difficult and somewhat annoying situation and make it worse. Many of the homeowners of Taylor Pond walk on the street, either at night and some during the day, and they also walk their dogs. You can go anytime and see someone walking their pooch. Middleton, they will be at risk with increased traffic, and since there are no sidewalks on Middleton, it even presents a greater hazard. So considering just those, and I'll go through a few more, there are significant negative effects to opening up a dead-end street. The change will not reduce the traffic on Chapel Hill. People thinking it will be a cutoff will come in at one end and either go out on hickory or spruce, thus creating another choke point to enter onto Chapel Hill Road. The Chapel Hill Road problem will not be fixed until Chapel Hill Road is widened. The traffic volume increases in a neighborhood street, so does vehicle speed, accident frequency, noise, even crime. All these impacts then decrease property values. In addition to safety provided by the lack of speedy cars, the homes on a cul-de-sac themselves experience a lower crime rate. Dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs have lower burglary and vandalism rates. Furthermore, contiguous street systems have lower burglary rates and easily-traveled street layouts. Criminals avoid street patterns where they might get trapped. So in closing, I'm opposed to it, and I want to tell you, and I want some points for consideration for the boards, both you and for the zoning. In Connecticut, I served on the zoning board and also a zoning board of appeals. At that time, I never forgot that I was a stewardship for the people and not an advocate for the developers. At the corner of Academy and Walnut, there's a gazillion-dollar project to improve the quality of life and the citizens of Cary. It's going to be great. I go by it, I look at it. I'm sure there's going to be, when that's completed, I'm sure there's going to be a plaque with the names of every individual and every committee who had anything to do with it. But if it's approved to extend Middleton, it's going to create an adverse condition, disrupt the life of everyone, and I'm sure there will be no plaque put there for who was responsible for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Julia Mullin.
And who is our speaker after that?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Julia Mullin, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you here tonight. I've lived in Taylor's Pond for approximately nine years in two different locations. The first was 636 Middleton Avenue, and the second is now 107 Rosebrook Drive. I moved away for a couple of years and then moved back to Taylor's Pond because I love the area so much. I love it in its current form. It's fairly safe, it's neighborly, we know each other. It's kind of an old-timey neighborhood in that respect, and I'm very grateful for what is basically still affordable housing in Cary that allows me and others to live there. Regarding this proposed connection, there appears to be overwhelming opposition in Taylor's Pond, and for good reason. Sandra Paul and I, along with other community members, submitted comments that carefully lay out the reasons for our objections, and we would appreciate your careful review of those. We received only six days' notice of this hearing but have tried to be as comprehensive as possible in a short period of time. As a threshold issue, notice in this matter may have been deficient. Unless we're missing something, neither the application, the neighborhood meeting letter, the legal notice of this proceeding, or the agenda for this proceeding mention the connection. There is no way a member of the public would know that that was at issue in this matter. The connection request is mentioned only in the staff report with no justification. It simply says that it's required, and neighborhood meeting comments were not attached as described, although we appreciate them being provided tonight here by you all. Even if notice was deemed adequate, the connection should be denied because it would be devastating to Taylor's Pond. Our comments try to lay out the harm involved, including issues with traffic, safety, crime, wildlife, stormwater management, nuisance, and of course, property values. Given all of the negatives, we believe that connection does not align with town of Cary policies, including the transition criteria that was mentioned in the staff report. Finally, if connection were to occur, Taylor's Pond would need serious funding from the town to build sidewalks and maintain paved areas, all of which would be adversely affected. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight and for considering our written comments.
Thank you.
Hi there. This is a beautiful place. My name is Kimberly Taylor. One of the things about Cary that's been the nicest thing that I can think of is it's all the neighborhoods have each had their own unique, distinct personality and character. My husband and I, we are both native North Carolinians and we're longtime residents and homeowners of the Taylor's Pond community. I've seen, you know, when you drive around, you see growth in the Cary streets. You see the streets are widened, you've seen additional housing, businesses are built, you know, we've got this fantastic park that's coming. I mean, there's a lot of exciting things happening, and I'm so proud to tell people that Cary is my home. I want to preserve what we have in our neighborhood. I love Taylor's Pond. We have had so many chances to move, but no, I don't want to move. I love our home. I love our home. The thing that worries me is the remover, the removal of the divider on Middleton will cause Taylor's Pond to lose this character that makes it Taylor's Pond. You know, it's vital to preserve it. We have to preserve it. This change will alter the nature of the neighborhood by exposing a cut-through during high traffic on Chapel Hill. This cut-through will increase noise, traffic speeds, and cause Taylor's Pond to be less of a walkable neighborhood to people, pets, and wildlife. The increase of people, traffic, safety issues, and noise will decrease our property value. This is my home. I mean, I want to stay here. I like peacefulness, I love my neighbors, and that's, it's important. I just am here tonight to protect our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other registered speakers?
No.
I'd like to call on, I believe it's Mr. Sterns. Oh, you're fine.
Anyway, I am that middle townhouse right on the border of where the garden CU is. And there's the fence line, and of course, there's the divider. And there's a tree line that I'd like to basically keep. I've noticed that the log cabin's in the middle of this property, so probably the best thing to do to make everybody happy would take that, move it to the border right where that tree line is, and retain that individuality and the wildlife and the large trees that are there. And then they'd be able to just make their whole thing all in a row, and we wouldn't have to worry about them trying to figure out how to dance around the log cabin. And it would be in an area that would retain the individuality of my area and Taylor's Pond, and create a divider, a buffer in between these, you know, for all we know, it could be a 75-foot thing that they put. We don't really know what's going to happen. So my main interest is to just do that. I know it's hard to fight Town Hall, and I know people want, you know, to just think that Middleton getting blown out would be just an easy fix, but it wouldn't. You'd end up having a light on Hickory, a light on Taylor's Pond, a light on Middleton. Then you'd hit the new monstrosity that's on Chapel Hill and Maynard that they just built of these giant apartments, and people haven't even started to move into those yet. So we are looking at a huge bottleneck that is not going to be saved by blowing out Middleton and having people road rage a couple of feet just to get to the same exit to the same road. So basically, I feel like I'm just a homeowner, and I just want to retain that little piece of heaven that I have right there. And the best thing to do would be take that, take that log cabin, move it to that border, retain the tree line, and retain that kind of wonderland that I've loved. We will see what happens, but I am nervous. I have been here since 2004. We moved to Cary in 1975, when the visitor's center was on Kildare Farm Road, and there was nothing around it. I remember when, you know, Tryon Road ended and it was a dirt road. You know, the farm was still on Kildare Farm. And I'm getting older. I don't want to move. I love sitting in the backyard and listening to the birds and seeing the birds. We have a vibrant wildlife back there, and I'm just worried that somebody will come in and willy-nilly just take down all the trees. That new person that comes in to develop will then have trouble selling that property because people are going to look out and they're going to see the dump with the lights blinding them, they're going to see the train, and there's not going to be any kind of sound buffer at all. So with that in mind, I would just like to try to retain the tree line on the borders of Taylor's Pond and this property. And of course, I feel like, of course, blowing out Middleton won't solve any problems, and it'll just cost you more trouble because you'll have to install lights to all these places, and we'll have, we will have accidents, and people will have to be dodging cars. It's an unfortunate fact that Cary has blown up, and I'm happy, but I also realize that, you know, some people, not y'all, but some people are blinded by the money that can be made instead of retaining the quaint, nice places that people have grown to love in this town. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Please come forth. Sterns?
Sterns.
Hi there. My name is Stephanie Smith, and I submitted an email two days ago that wasn't acknowledged. So tonight is the first time I've actually seen this all mapped out. So I do want to make a clarification in the email that I'm reading. I said I'm writing to express my strong disapproval. First, I said, "Dear Mayor," city councilperson, "thank you for this forum." I'm writing to express my strong disapproval of the proposed thruway connecting the two existing Middleton streets. that was parallel to our Middleton. It was the first time I've drove, driven down it and I didn't realize that they also had two connecting streets, Spruce and Hickory, which makes it all that much more perplexing as to why this developer is wanting to tap in or marry into our neighborhood because they have two ins and outs and we have two ins and outs. So anyway, I said, "I'm surprised the developer," that's why this is not going to make much sense. I said, "I'm surprised the developer is wanting to do this considering virtually all people prefer living on a street with a cul-de-sac or dead end for many reasons, most compellingly the safety factor. There is absolutely no advantage to be gained by conjoining the two streets." And that was my being mistaken and not understanding that there was also Spruce and Hickory. So anyway, I said, "I'm a Taylor's Pond Association Board Member, longtime resident of 17 years and member of our landscaping committee. One of our landscaping committee's main objectives is to practice sustenance landscaping. We plant things, trees, shrubs, vines, et cetera, that provide food and habitat for our constantly marginalized wildlife, largely owing to the continuous development in the area, leaving them now where to go. We have been engaged in such projects for over 10 years. It's actually a prototype. Sustenance landscaping that we wish the city council would duplicate in their critical role of imposing what developers need to plant. Food for wildlife, which is a fair trade-off considering their habitat is being steadily destroyed. We're one of the last remaining havens, excuse me, havens for wildlife in this area with rubber stamp projects closing in on us. Increasing the traffic on those streets abutting our beautiful pond will create an unnecessary disturbance threatening our, creating our wildlife sanctuary. We have many geese that are often on the streets that residents are used to accommodating." I'm making other points that people have made. We also have the existing problem, I live on Middleton, especially on the entrance to Taylor's Pond off of Chapel Hill, Chapel Hill, of having a very narrow, already dangerous, curvy, two-lane road that is made worse because of the city's policy of permitting residents to park alongside city streets. It's a challenge to navigate and there are many dog walkers in the area who exacerbate an already perilous environment. There are studies that show cut-through streets open up those neighborhoods to increased accidents, crime, traffic, and loss in home values. I seriously hope that the city council is not considering doing this because they believe it will function as a relief valve for traffic congestion on Chapel Hill Road because there will be no such gains from connecting the two Middletons. There is absolutely no advantage to the residents nor the city in doing this. It will be devastating to a neighborhood that already has to endure noise from trains, heavy traffic on Chapel Hill, and occasional odious stenches from the nearby organic landfill. This will prove, also prove devastating to our property values. Taylor's Pond is one of the last bastions of affordable housing for ownership and rentals in the city and I can't help but be suspicious if this would be even being proposed in the tonier neighborhoods. I urge all city council members to read the following link, which is chock full of excellent data of the impact of cut-throughs on neighborhoods and cities. And I give a link, it's a legal website that has a lot of studies and data and none of it points to a furtherance of cohesion. Anyway, thank you for your time and attention to this important matter for Taylor's Pond residents and I'm trusting that you'll all do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I have some questions for Ms. Wheelahan and then some comments. So if a property matches the land use and the rezoning, the developer can build today without any council approval, comments, anything? Is that correct? And they can build today 50 units an acre?
If there's anything to build today? They would need a minimum lot size of 100,000 square feet.
Would that connection be required of them if they built 50 units an acre? So if we turn down this proposal, they could get 50 units an acre and the connection?
That's correct. If the assemblage were larger, yes.
Does this road qualify for traffic calming or is it not allowed on these types of roads? If they were connected?
That's something that our traffic calming program would evaluate or in the process, but yeah.
And are there any sidewalks or widening proposed for this development?
So this development would be required to improve their frontage to the 50-foot right-of-way section with sidewalk on one side, likely on the south side, given the shape of the assemblage.
And was there at the stubbing saying future road connection?
There is not a sign. Our transportation department is in process of their annual inventory of future road-planned connections that may have been constructed prior to the signs existing or road connections, future road connections that may have, signs have been removed. So there's not one there currently.
Okay, and then, I'm getting close to the end. The buffers about trees being removed, what is required of tree buffer?
There are no, there are, I'm going to correct myself here because this is on the outside, on the Taylor's Pond side. Within the downtown area, downtown area, within that, there are no site-to-site requirements. But because it's just on the edge, there is a minimum buffer on the Taylor's Pond side and I might need a minute to look that up.
That's okay.
Yeah, there is a buffer requirement between this assemblage and the Taylor's Pond side. On the other sides, there wouldn't be since they're all internal to the downtown subarea.
And so while the applicant is not required to save those trees, I would ask the applicant to please work with the residents, see if there's something we can do to save some of those trees in the buffer or create a buffer to help them out. Don't know if that's possible, just something to see. And then there was one comment that I heard about imposing wildlife restrictions, something to that effect on developers. Please keep in mind that we can't impose anything. What is required is what we can ask for and then everything else we can say, "please." So we don't have authority to do those types of things, like we want you to, we require you to put in extra buffer, we require you to do wildlife mitigation, we require, we don't have that authority, so we can't do that. So, all right, that's my list. Now I'm going to open it up to Mr. Frank.
Question for clarification. I heard one of the speakers say that they had six days' notice, is that correct?
The notice for this was posted per our normal schedule, which would, the letters would be mailed two weeks prior to the public hearing. And signs were posted and the public hearing notice was on the website, all per our normal standard policies, so.
Just, I know with our business and other stuff that happened, I'm hearing a lot of things lately about delays with people getting mail in the post office, so probably not the town's fault, quite possibly the post office's fault. So we might, three weeks' notice instead of two weeks, just to make sure that people have ample time to be notified and prepare and work a meeting like this into their schedule. So I'm clear. The streets in Taylor's Pond, Taylor's Pond Drive, their section of Middleton, are they public or are they private?
That is a public street, Middleton, on the Taylor's Pond side as well, yes.
Okay.
Do you mind if I, when you say public and it was built in the 80s, does that mean it's the same size as the public streets we have now?
I'm just trying to determine are they public or private?
Right, like, because they said that it was, that cars have difficulty going both ways, were our standards different when it was built? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, this is, the development plan was done in 1981, constructed around 1984, and then it was accepted as a public street in 1999. So there would be some differences in the standard, the cross-section of that street compared to what we would be looking toward on the newer sections of Middleton, yeah.
Okay, so that's why.
There's no sidewalks, for example, there's no sidewalks.
Right, there's no sidewalks in Taylor's, okay, thank you, sorry about that.
No problem, no problem. And I do just want to clarify one thing. The developer is not trying to make the connection, trust me. If the developer could get out of making this connection, he would in a heartbeat. He probably considers it a unfair financial burden, but it's actually a town requirement, the town is why he's compelled to do that. So if anybody's the bad guy on that one, it's the town, not the developer. Not that I'm standing up for the developer, but, does anybody else have questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is, and there's a 100-foot buffer, from what I remember, between railroads and?
That, there is and there's some of that that would apply from the right-of-way. So I would have to refer to our developer reviews staff to see exactly the width of the buffer that would apply from the railroad property here. But there is a, there is a buffer off of the railroad right-of-way typically.
And is there any?
I think it's 50 feet.
Right, it's 50 feet on, I think it's like 100 feet with the railroad in the middle is what I remember, but is?
I believe that's the case also.
Okay. And is there any requirement for a buffer past that in the town, like for transit-oriented development? Is there, do we have any requests? I know that Councilmember Robinson is listening, but part of our concern has been in the past, the way things look from the railroad and also the way it feels for new homeowners that are close to the railroad. I mean, I can't help the Taylor's Pond folks who were there, you know, before, but has there been any discussion about that at all with the developer?
There has not, so, you know, we can take that feedback and have that discussion with them if they want to consider, you know, any additional buffer off of that to take that into consideration where the railroad's there.
I will say that when the towns of Madison were constructed, they actually used soundproof windows and siding and things on that side to at least alleviate noise.
And was that a condition?
I don't remember if it was or not. I just, I think it was something they did to, you know, make the townhouse more tenable.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And one other question is, is there any plan, does the town have any plan to add sidewalks on the Taylor's Pond side? I mean, these are like sidewalks that go to nowhere, if, should these be put in? Are there, is there anything to improve the Taylor Pond side?
I'm not aware that there's a current project, but that is something that we can speak to transportation about and see where that falls. You know, I know they're always rating the sidewalk needs around town and trying to fill in those gaps whenever possible. So I would guess that it's on the list and we could, we could look that up and see where that, where it is in the priorities.
And my last one is, there was a mention of trees and some big, beautiful trees. Are there any champion trees on the site?
We don't have a tree survey. It's not required at this time in the rezoning process. That would only be if they had a PDP that we were reviewing. So that would be required at the time of development plan review. So I don't know the answer to that. We wouldn't typically be asking that at this point.
Okay.
Again, given that the connection is town ordinance, town required, what would be the process should the applicant want to get out of making that connection?
Yeah, and there are some areas of the ordinance that speak to particular connections that could be deemed at development plan review not, not to be made, sometimes for topographical reasons, if there's drainage or other challenges to make that connection. Sometimes the age of development, one of the qualifications is what, when it was developed. One is also, is the pavement all the way up to the property line? What are the conditions on site? So those would all be evaluated at the time of development plan review. So, you know, we're speaking to it here because it's a standard requirement, but also there would be a possibility that at time of evaluation that it meets some of those criteria and a connection wouldn't be able to be made. As I mentioned, there is, the plat shows the right-of-way all the way up to the property line and we observe the concrete to go all the way to the property line. So, you know, we want to be transparent that that appears to be the conditions that are on site now and it's a fairly flat piece of land, but we would be evaluating that and looking at that particular section of the ordinance to see if it could be appropriate here.
Okay.
I have one, I want to just get some clarity here. What's the difference between a road that ends and a stub?
A road that ends and a stub?
And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be tricky, I'm just, I find it compelling.
You want a layperson's answer?
Yeah, if I were buying a home, right, as was described, and the road ended there and nothing was disclosed to me and there's no sign, I would assume that was the end of the road.
Well, that's why, you all correct me, been here longer, we asked that stubs be put in so that you wouldn't come to that conclusion. We've had cases in years gone by where people said, "Well, I didn't know this road was going through." So part of the intention on our part was that you create the stub so that sometimes, so people moving there or living there know that at some point in the future, that road may go through, may not, but that's, it's there as a visual reminder. Now, a lot of times, I think you brought this up, we have a sign there too, you know, it's like, just so you don't have to think too hard. So we, you know, we have not only the stub, but the signs. But a lot of those signs came in after, you know, for the newer ones and they weren't after the fact. So, you know, it was disappointing to hear that we didn't have that, but that's just part of some of those older communities. But that's the whole point of a stub, from what I remember from my perspective.
So a stub, I'm assuming is, is it, if it's paved to the property line, is it because there's no curb? I'm just, I'm just saying from a reasonable expectation of somebody who's buying property, you know, I can tell you, I would not notice something like that and would assume that's the end of the street, right? Especially in a heritage neighborhood or something that's been there for quite some time. So I think that seems to me like a pretty compelling reason to consider, you know, if the developer chooses to consider, you know, an exception here to the, you know, connectivity of stubs rule that we have here in Cary, in my opinion.
Ms. Cohen-Johnson, I think Ms. Wheelahan could speak to today's standards. We would, if a road is going to end, it would be, it would end in a cul-de-sac or something that clearly looks like an end. And so again, this was 1984. So I don't know what the standards were then, but if a road were going to end in a neighborhood, it would end in a more formalized way.
Right, right. I wasn't trying to do a gotcha, I was truly trying to just really understand, stubs keep coming up and I'm learning.
I would just note also, you know, the development plan, we as staff would look and say, "What's on the development plan?" Not that everyone looks up at the development plan for a neighborhood that they're purchasing, but, you know, you can see that the right-of-way is all the way to the property line for future connections, so.
And we require the stub frequently now, right? So that we have this ability going forward. And if a stub is put in now, we require it to be, for signage to be included?
Yes.
We do, okay. Okay, thank you.
For this exact reason.
So this is not the first time?
No.
Yeah.
And it will not be the last.
Yeah.
Other comments?
I have one question. So it was very helpful listening to the speakers at the public hearing and one of the things that I heard, which is really narrows down the opposition to the connectivity, was the fear that this is going to become a cut-through street. And I was sitting here thinking, "Why would you cut through there?" And one of the speakers actually highlighted this, "You're avoiding traffic on Chapel Hill Road." So my question is, obviously Chapel Hill Road's an NC DOT road. Do we know of any plans from NC DOT to widen or remediate Chapel Hill Road, specifically that section between Maynard and Harrison?
Chapel Hill Road has been under study for quite some time and we're really actively working with transportation. I don't know if anyone wants to continue to speak on this, but.
Not going to happen soon.
Yeah, keep going.
We're expecting some, you know, some improvement along Chapel Hill Road. There's a large bit of right-of-way there, so we've been studying what that cross-section, how that could promote multimodal connectivity and, you know, be a good, another good connector through to downtown. So there will be improvements on Chapel Hill Road.
Just not anytime soon.
What I would say is, I think it's important that a council member base their decision and communicate to the residents that because of some imminent or future improvements to Chapel Hill Road, the cut-throughs won't happen because that could be 15 years from now. I mean, it's still that unknown.
Yeah, just to pile on, if it's not on the 10-year plan or whatever now, what's on there is getting pushed back, so, yeah, I'd say in 15 years at least.
I will say, and it probably doesn't help the residents sitting there and thinking, "I don't want cut-through," but both Jennifer Robinson and I experienced this exact same thing in Preston Village, where there was a road, there was a road that was proposed right by. there was a road that was proposed right by Green Hope Elementary School. It was called dead, it was called Upchurch Dead End Road. So not only was it a stub, but it was called a dead end. And it was, and, and there was connectivity that was required to Lewis Stevens Road for the development on the other side. And as a citizen, I came to town council and said, please don't do this to us. This will be, this will invite crime, this will invite traffic, this will invite people using us as a cut through. In fact, it cut off the entire corner of High House and Davis. And I, afterwards, I will tell you that the only people that use it are the people that live in Preston Village. No one used it for cut through because it wasn't, it wasn't easy. It didn't actually cut off any time. And, and Councilmember Robinson and I talk about it quite a bit of one of the things that we learned about cut throughs is they're, unless they really significantly save, they're absolutely not what people choose to do. And I know it doesn't make you feel in the seats when you're watching this feel any better, but I will say, just sitting on the other side and having been at the table complaining about something, my experience was in that particular neighborhood, in our particular neighborhood, that the only people that used it were us in the neighborhood to have multiple ways to get in and out. And it actually saved time for emergency services for the fire department to get to us. It took off five minutes for them to get. So it's just something to consider. It, I understand, but I just thought I'd also share my story.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Hey, Gerald, may I say something?
I was, you're reading my mind. I was going to say Jennifer Robinson's name's been thrown around so much, give her the opportunity to speak, please.
Thank you. Yeah, Lori, I'm glad that you brought that up because I was actually thinking about that while the, the speakers were talking about not wanting this connectivity. That is when Lori and I first met was over this connectivity issue. And we were both adamant that it was really going to just destroy our neighborhood. And as Lori stated, it really didn't. I think change is hard. And I think that it's really hard to see your community change when it's been functioning a certain way for a long time. I would like to add on to Lori's comment about screening between the railroad in this new community. I would really like us to consider what the view shed of Cary looks like from a train, making sure that we're not kind of just, you know, making it look bad. I'd like us to try to be thinking about that because we will be having more trains over the years coming on that corridor.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Anyone else on council have comments or questions? So for those who came to speak tonight, thank you very much. This isn't the end of the process. This isn't a decision time. This is the beginning of the process. And so what happens next is it goes to the planning and zoning board for their review and recommendation. And if you're not familiar with the planning and zoning board, they're just citizens that have been appointed. And so they're going to give a recommendation on whether they think this fits the Cary community plan, which was created by citizens, by the way. And they'll make that recommendation in a few months, and I emphasize months, it will come back to the council with a recommendation from the planning and zoning board and a recommendation from staff and all the input we receive from citizens. And at that time, we'll have the information we need to make a decision. So we don't have that information now and it's just the beginning of the process. So how can you communicate with us? Of course, you can email us. And I'm sorry, the one who spoke that said we didn't confirm, usually I don't respond unless you ask a question, but I remember reading your email. You can communicate with us by email. You can come to every council meeting until a decision is made. Well, you can come to every council meeting period and speak. You can speak, a public speaks out since this is the public hearing. And you can contact us any way you would like and we'll be sure to get answers to your questions and give you information you need. And of course, Ms. Wheelahan is your staff liaison. She'll be up to date with the applicant because she'll be communicating regularly with the applicant. And with the applicant, she's very experienced. She's been representing clients for many years and I'm sure she'll be glad to work with you to see if we can get a proposal that everybody can agree with. And I don't know where the connection is or where you're going with that or what's going to happen, but it's something to consider as we move forward and see if that's something that's, that you may be willing to do. So those are the things tonight. Please don't let this be your last time to come to town hall. We're glad that you're here and we're glad that we heard from you. And we look forward to seeing you here at town hall again. And so with that, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is 23A02, 11550 Green Level Church Road. And once again, Ms. Wheelahan will introduce the item and council may take action on this item this evening. Ms. Wheelahan?
Thank you. The owners of 104 acres of property located near the convergence of Aviation Parkway, excuse me, started speaking to the, the next one. The owners of a parcel located at 115500 Green Level Church Road have petitioned for annexation of 1.74 acres. So the parcels may be connected to Cary utilities to facilitate construction of a 10,000 square foot child daycare center. The total annexation area is 2.31 acres, which includes 0.57 acres of intervening right of way adjacent to the site. The area is contiguous to Cary's corporate limits and within the ETJ. The property is zoned Office Research and Development, or ORD. The associated development plan, 22DP 11081, Celebri School is currently under review and based on the provisions of the LDO, can be approved administratively when staff determines the plan meets applicable LDO requirements. In accordance with the LDO, the property must be annexed before the development plan can be approved. Following tonight's public hearing, council may take action on the request. This concludes my presentation. And following the public hearing, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wheelahan. So now is the public hearing for 23A02. And I'll call on our clerk to read any written comments or call on any registered speakers.
No written comments, no registered speakers.
So if you're in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing, now's the time, come forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Could you move to your left, please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Lauder. I'm a civil engineer with Bowman Consulting and I'm here to represent the owner for the annexation and just answer any questions that may arise concerning this case.
Thank you, Mr. Lauder.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments.
23A02.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
First time I think I've remembered anybody speaking at a public hearing for the annexation.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now move to our next public hearing, 23A06 Merit Properties. Once again, Ms. Wheelahan will introduce the item and council may take action. Ms. Wheelahan?
The owners of 104 acres of property located near the and I540 in Northern Cary have petitioned for annexation. The proposed annexation area comprises two tax parcels and a portion of a third on Nelson Road and Pleasant Grove Church Road. This undeveloped property is located in Cary's extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, of ORD and is within the Airport Overlay District. The associated development plan currently under review, 21DP 4384 Briar Creek Industrial proposes a total of 740, 250 square feet of industrial office with warehouse flex space spread over 13 buildings, ranging from approximately 8,000 to 108,000 square feet. The sketch plan was approved by the zoning board of adjustment in February 2022. And so the development plan can be approved administratively when staff determines it meets applicable LDO requirements. To develop under Cary zoning regulations, the property must be annexed into Cary's corporate limits. Following tonight's public hearing, council may take action on the request. This concludes my presentation. Following the public hearing, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wheelahan. So now's the time for the public hearing for 23A06. And I'll call on our town clerk to read any written comments or, and call on any registered speakers.
No written comments, no registered speakers.
If you're in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing, I would invite you forward at this time. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council for questions, comments or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation petition 23A06.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.